This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, it's 5:30. I'm starting the meeting. I don't care if people are late, people are late. This is the meeting of the City Council Rules and Government Relations Committee for January 26th. I would like a motion to approve the minutes that you submitted, Connie. I forget the date. It was the...
It wa-- um, I'm sorry. Uh, JP's not here?
No.
Yeah. Um, so move.
You have the date.
What date?
Oh, the date is, um, January 11th, 2023.
So, motion to approve the minutes for January 11th. I'll second that motion. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion's approved.
Hang on just one second.
So I'm gonna call up the, uh, ordinance. Probably make it bigger and forget, huh, on the side? I didn't want to do that. I know how to make Google men bigger.
I think you just go like Chris on the tack pad.
And then, and more.
Um, well, would it be...
This is Google Docs, so I'm not sure how to make it bigger.
I wonder within the program itself, you can go to view and zoom, maybe? Or...
Why did I get lit-- lit in the notes? I apologize.
I was supposed to just take a share on the screen.
Well, I do that all the time. It's just that I like to use Microsoft Word and how to use it, but this comes up as Drive, and it is very similar.
Uh, go over to 100%. Do we go to 100%?
Oh, where's that?
Right words. Go, go to your, that way, that, that.
There we go.
Very nice.
That didn't make it any bigger, did it?
Yeah.
Yes.
But you can do it more if you want.
And then you switch it over.
Look, okay?
And Jeff gets to watch our process here.
So Jeff, uh, when you raise your hand to talk, I'll just let you talk. But anyway, I want to start by telling you my initial observations as a chair. Um, these highlighted things on here are mine. I feel it's a good committee to have. I think it's better than having a lot of different committees that do the same things. Um, my, there's a couple of things that I think we really should look at. One is, I don't think any paid staff member should be obligated in any way to be on this committee, even as non-voting members. If I'm a non-voting member, I'm gonna want to be there. And the reason for that is because they already have enough to do. And secondly, they can be called in if they really need the conservation agent or a member of the planning department to come to a meeting and to help them with whatever subject. But I like the idea of the committee tackling biodiversity, bee stuff, sustainability, energy, anything. I think having a committee that can give us policy and legislative action is what...
I think that's...
Uh, wait, am I... This is JP. You having trouble, JP? Oh, that's my fault then. I was starting the meeting and I... Are you in now? You're in, okay. I apologize. I went to share and it changed everything. All right, you're in. Good.
Good. Can you hear me?
Yes. We're all set, JP. Thank you. Uh, we already approved minutes and we were happy you weren't here because we just said aye. So we started talking and I just said I like the idea of this ordinance. I like the idea of the committee. Uh, but I don't feel that staff members should be obligated to be on this committee by ordinance. They can be asked to be involved. The other thing I want us to consider is dropping it to seven members. Um, I think having seven members is a little more workable. I know that as a nine-member CPA committee, which is designed by ordinance and gives a lot of money, I rarely have nine members. Okay, but seven members might be there. I think having one city councilor is enough. Um, but I like the, and these different commissions that you're looking at, I like the fact that you say order designate. Because if a con-- we can't make a conservation commission person be on it. So if a conservation commission says we have no volunteers, but this person might want to do it, I think that's a way out. But I think having them there, the other thing I'm wondering, and I'm glad you're to hear Nicole, do we need an energy advisory committee if we have this committee? This committee is gonna deal with energy, and I'm just wondering about that. You would have to disband it, I think. But I think it's, it's a redundancy. So those are my three major things that I wanted to bring up. But just, Connie, why don't you start and then I'll go to Jeff.
Well, say, I think it's great. I, I do think if we could combine the energy committee with this, that would be ideal because I think it, it is, if we are looking at this, we want to look holistically at sustainability, the environment, energy, et cetera. And so I think if we can combine that, I think you're gonna have people who are interested in energy. You're gonna have people who are interested in this, and for them to be in the same room, able to talk to each other, that would be ideal. And different city departments aren't having to go to one committee and then go and advise another committee and going, right? They're all in the same room.
That's why I like this because it has, it combines everything. Anything else, uh?
No, that was just my thing. I'd like to see those two committees combined.
Uh, Jeff, go for it.
I actually, I think Connie was saying something about me and I was giving a thumbs up, so I don't have any comments at this point.
Okay. Um, Omar? JP? Oh, JP. Sorry, JP. I keep forgetting JP because you're not in the room. Am I ever gonna see you again?
Uh, I, I, thank you, Dan. Yes, you will see me again. Hey, uh, I, I'm not sure. I, I guess I could go either way on the question of whether or not the, uh, energy committee should be standalone or be part of this. So I don't have a strong feeling one way or, or the other, although I definitely see the point of wrapping an holistic approach to the subject. There may be so many other areas of the energy committee specifically that needs to delve into that it may be a lot for everyone else to attend that meeting. And have it be an energy committee meeting. That being said, a lot of the issues will, will overlap and dovetail. That's why I don't have a strong feeling about that. Dan, could you roll it up again, please, if you wouldn't mind, to the top? Okay, to your, uh, in terms of the members that we were talking about, uh... I'm curious as to why seven and not nine. So I'd be interested.
It's more manageable. That's all I can say. It's not a deal breaker for me. I just think it's easier to manage. And to worship. It's hard to get nine people to...
I, I know, and it's also hard to get nine people to collect themselves on a given date or time to go ahead and, and, and meet. So getting nine kind of gives you a little bit of flexibility. Well, we can get to a quorum.
We have four. Is it easier quorum? And if we eliminate one city council member, we don't need it in a, if we eliminate the energy advisory committee, we don't need that member. So now we're down to seven.
Right.
Anything else on, uh, I like the commission and I like the agricultural commission. I wonder, can I jump in here? Do you have something else, JP? Because I had thought.
No, I, I just think, I, I think having a member from the energy advisory committee kind of covers that base, but again, we'll leave that to further discussion.
Well, just to leave that alone, just to leave that from, to talk about that for a minute, they advise the mayor. And this advises the mayor, as well as the city council. To get two, and, and they're dealing with, and the reason I brought it up is because down here, one of your purposes is environmental stewardship, which energy is a big part of that. So if we're gonna have that as part of the responsibilities, I'm sorry, this thing is driving me crazy. How did I do that? All right, wait a minute. If we're gonna have this number two, why do we need an energy advisory committee to do the same thing? Um, when I talked, I wanted to ask about the agricultural commission and I wanted to ask Jeff or Owen, is there, I'm saying this because I know native gardens and agriculture, sometimes anti pesticides, et cetera, have a conflict. Is there, what I like about having them in the room, the two groups, is they can debate things, come to compromise. So I wondered if you had any feedback from the agricultural commission. You mentioned there was a woman here before, and I wanted to ask that because I know that the use of pesticides is important to agriculture. There's probably some out there they should be using that are a lot safer. But I wonder, has, has there been any feedback there about like the bee situation and all that? You know, Benny Owen or?
Well, I think that's where an integrated pesticide management plan comes in, that there might be different applications uh, from the agricultural side of things than there are on just, um, lands, general landscape plans. And I think that's where those kinds of plans.
But if we had a member of the agricultural commission on the committee, then they get the feedback.
Yeah, of course, and that's, that's, yeah, that's why it's there.
What do you think?
Many reasons.
Jeff, what do you think? Do you have any feedback on that?
Um, no, thanks for asking. I mean, I think, um, I don't remember from the last time I saw this if, the, if there's references to other city, citywide plans and initiatives. You know, I think that's, this committee should be aware of those and using those as guides. And then with something like, so just, it's come up, you know, it's, historically it's come up a lot. So like farmland protection. If through our climate action plan and this committee's work, that farmland protection is a priority, you know, that's when this committee would maybe send it to the agricultural commission to have them drill down and do that work. Because that's really what's in their bailiwick and things like conservation commission. So, um, I think things are going to get shifted around to other people as priorities are identified. And I would just want to make sure that within, within this scope or the char, if you call this a charge, um, that they're evaluating and reviewing existing and future like planning documents that the city has that are kind of broad, broad goals and things like that.
There's some homework test to do. Owen?
So I agree with about 90% of, of your comments. I think that, um, I tend, when I do, just to be clear, when I do these things, I try to bring them in a broad brush so that way you can take a lot of different ideas and you can, and you can distill it. So I, I think, I think seven members, I, I felt a little cumbersome to me, but once I started adding up my head all the, just the non-mayoral appointees, you already are like partially there. But if you start reducing it to one city councilor, you have those three other committees, that's four right there. So that allows for basically three appointed from the mayor, et cetera. I think that makes sense. And that way also you could basically have a quorum, even if none of the, the mayoral appointees show up, uh, et cetera. So that's a great idea. Um, I'm hesitant to committing to, to, to supporting any action on the energy advisory committee without conversation with them. And I think that you could potentially form this committee and have an ongoing conversation about that they should be absorbed and not make any hasty decisions right now.
And, and that's a good point because this can't, this ordinance, well, I guess it could dissolve the energy advisory committee, but to do that, I think, without a lot of conversation, I don't think this ordinance should do that. We can change it. I also heard that there's only two members on that committee. What's its membership by?
Yeah, I mean, that you have a quorum and, um, they also have business before them. So the advisory.
Well, okay.
Like simple, like, I shouldn't say simple. I mean, it's complicated, but it's, it's long. Like there's, it's not like, oh, we're gonna read this over. It's detailed.
But going to what Jeff just said, this committee has someone from the advisory committee and it wants the energy advisory to weigh in on something, then that committee member takes it back. That's exactly what happens on the CPA. Um, so there's a reason not to get rid of the energy advisory committee because now we're having feedback and the whole full committee gets something from this committee to deal with, or in agriculture or conservation. So maybe that's a reason.
And then, um, I agree with you too. I, I, I moved the planning department, those other city departments out of, you know, a voting obligation for a variety of reasons. But I agree with you that they could just, and, and then there's kind of redundant language right now, that they could just be invited at the pleasure of the, of the committee that, to, um, to weigh in as our planner thankfully does when we have a meeting. So I think that could be taken out of there. I just want to make sure that it's recognized by ordinance that we expect that that committee would engage departments like DPW Parks.
We have to write that into the ordinance, but it would seem logical sense, but...
Yeah, I, I don't know. Some, I thought, to me, it almost gets to, kind of like creates an obligation. That's just, that's just my thought.
So eliminate this language.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
And then, Owen, you wanna say something?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I, I think that...
And then me.
People on the energy advisory committee might be open to this. I had a conversation with one person who's a member of that, and they said that makes a whole lot of sense.
You're open to which?
Combining. Like I talked about the sustainability and that aspect, and that individual said that would be an amazing opportunity because we talk about all of, we try to talk about all of these things anyway. And so to be in the same room allows us to be able to do that. And I think that's the point about the holistic aspect, is you can have subcommittees who are working on various things within that, but the fact that they're talking to each other as opposed to, I've gotta wait a week to go do this. And I've got another month to get back to everybody to talk about what happened and what was said, et cetera. It just, to me, feels like it slows down our ability to move effectively to address a particular issue or move a particular idea through the process of decisions.
But I don't think they understood that we were talking about dissolving their committee. I think, it sounds like they thought, oh, yes, have our, this committee and their committee in the same pool. I think that's what you were thinking.
I, I think it's, it, we can have that conversation. I don't know that the idea was one committee.
He thought that, or whoever he talked to thought that one committee. Well, that's interesting. Well, we should bring it to them.
I, Andrew, if I may, regarding one committee, I just wonder, I think this requires some additional conversation with the energy advisory committee before you may definitely make any decisions on that, since there may be, I mean, I don't know, you may be diluting the energy advisory committee so much to have only one member from that committee beyond this committee. Uh, and I don't know. So...
I wanna go to Omar because he's wanted to talk, then I'll get back to you. Go ahead, Omar.
I like the idea of reaching the energy advisory committee to see if we can change um, or add to the scope and add more members to that committee. I, I think that's one option.
To their committee?
To their committee. Second option is reduce from nine to seven. Change some wording here, instead of say, uh, under term of for committees member shall be as follow. I think should say member must be as follow. What about if, uh, anyone from the conservation committee, a, a agricultural committee, commission, and energy advisory committee, or city councilor decided that they don't want to be in this committee? Because they shall, then we don't have any committee. So, but if we say must, I think we have the opportunity, if no one from the conservation commission wanted, we can appoint someone else. Same with the councilors. Um, what about if we have nine councilors and maybe not one wanted, but next term, no one want to be in this committee? So what are we gonna do? Reduce it to six members? So I think sort of should, should say must. To do things, the intention should go to the city councilor, to those commissions, to find someone they're willing to serve in different committees, but not just one.
Let me get to semantics, because I did, just did the charter. The word may is used in the charter a lot, which refers to possibly.
Or may.
The word shall refers to must. If, if you, if you say shall in the charter, you have to do it. Right? I mean, I know that for a fact. So shall does not mean you have a choice. Shall means you must.
Okay, I just want to be sure.
Yeah, because I just went through that in the charter all the time.
Because we had to put, yeah, I think should be in...
We, we, we changed, one big one was, we changed the, uh, ordinance review from the city council. May review the ordinance and then they never did it.
Okay, but I know you see what I'm seeing. Like in case one of the members from the conservation commission said, I don't, I don't want to be in that. I'm too busy. So conservation committees, commissioning will be enough.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Did, Mr. President, did you see the, the clause under that though? That if they either don't, they don't exist, or they don't appoint somebody, or, or whatever reason, then, then it defers to...
This clause here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I see.
Mayor.
I think, I think the word shall says conservation commi-- committee, you have to.
Okay.
You have to appoint someone. But the idea of a designate to me means that they know somebody who'd love to be on the conservation commission, but they can't because the membership is full. How about if you join this committee for us? Just a thought, just a possibility. I like that language a lot. Because that means that there's an out for the commission members who may have, I really don't really want to do this right now.
Yeah, that was the intent.
And that can happen, yeah.
Um, I'm wondering too, though, if the president of city council, it's, um, I don't know. Mayor, do you have any comments? Because I'm talking about you and like, about the, about the appointment of members or anything else?
Uh, I, one, I think the energy advisory committee is very separate and shouldn't be combined. Um, I do think that, that the committee as proposed has a lot of purpose, but I think it's premature because we are starting our first climate action plan that our conservation agent, Cassie, is working with as, as well as Jeff. But I, Jeff can speak, um, as well, she works with the energy advisory committee on aggregation, um, on the electrical, uh, electric, uh, aggregation, and that study is already done. Um, but I, I just feel like the, I worry with... Yeah, I, I mean, we have a climate action plan coming that will have very specific goals that are tied to very specific grants. And I, I think that there's tons of value with this, but, um...
I think the...
I'll be, I'll be completely honest. This committee is fantastic. I think we need it. But to write it up now without looking at that climate action plan, there's a good chance myself or other mayors will have very little interaction because we're gonna focus on the environmental impacts that are prioritized by professionals in part because they're, and also they're more likely to be funded.
Does that climate action include the biodiversity? Because we started with this, with the bees and the bee city thing.
Yep.
And, and, and that would incorporate that, that climate action plan would include that, that kind of stuff?
Yeah, I mean...
Because Cassie and the conservation people were very much in favor of...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a holistic thing. I mean, I, I don't, I know that the, the, joining the, um, Bee City USA, whatever it's called now, just thought it was a separate thing that would go forward um, and not necessarily stop because of a new committee or whatnot. Um, and I, I also, you know, we have a lot of committees and the number of people appointed are different than the number of people who can make the time requirement. Um, I think hybrid and, and I just... Yeah, I, I don't, I think there's a bigger conversation about, um, our committees in general. There's been them. We've just added committees as over time, but we, we've not really reviewed them and their scope and whatnot. You know, we've got a couple of, of committees that aren't outdated, but they don't include everything that committee now does. And, and vice versa. Some of the committees have changed because now we have a conservation agent or, you know, um...
Well, let me ask you, Owen, given what the mayor said. The original re- resolution was joining the, forget bee city, make us a bee city. Can that happen by just council resolution or vote of some kind without creating? I don't want this ad hoc committee. I don't think we need it. We could do it in this committee and recommend to the council some kind of action. And I'm only saying that because the mayor makes sense. There's a big climate action plan. I didn't know about that.
No, I wasn't aware.
I wasn't listening when it was coming.
So I don't have a conversation with the planner about, I mean, I, I don't want to speak to the planner. He might be able to comment. I mean, I think part of the thought was that this actually might be a good landing spot for that, um, that consultant to kind of present, and it's a good, uh, opportunity for kind of a space of transparency and discussion and integration for that climate action plans. I don't know if, because we did talk about that and I made sure I put it into the language um, about climate action plan, MVP, uh, master plan. You know, I know there's potentially gonna be some state, other state federal programs coming, and it seemed like a good receptacle for it. Um, because unlike, like a conservation commission and, and energy advisory commission, we don't really have anything for some of these other kind of ecologically sustainable pieces that would fit perfectly with what this consultant brings to the city. So that was part of the thought, and again, I, I still, if you could correct me if I'm wrong, Jeff, but it sounded like you felt that, that, that might, there might be a good kind of dovetailing here. Um, and I don't, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I don't wanna...
No, go ahead, Jeff.
Okay. Um, yeah, I think there's different ways to approach this, so I think we're, we're talking through that. The climate action plan is gonna be the umbrella, the umbrella item um, that will create a list of actions that the city is gonna need. Um, the primary objective, you know, out the gate for that is gonna be reducing the city's carbon footprint. Um, because that is the primary conversation at the state level is, is for the state to reduce it. And then it will be providing grant money for the, for cities and towns to reduce their carbon footprint. The other part of that plan will be described as resiliency. So that's kind of this broad brush term that I, I do think encapsulates much of what you have listed here is resiliency. And what this plan will do is it will look back at the things we've done. Uh, because we have done a fair number of things to be more resilient, and it'll identify some gaps. And it'll identify future action, action steps that the city should be taking. So it will not, it will not create, you know, a farmland protection ordinance. It might say farmland is important, you should create a farmland protection ordinance. Then you have another, you know, six months to a year's worth of work to try to do that. But the, so I think...
Let me, let me interrupt just one second. Who's doing that? That's what this committee could do then, right?
Well, I don't, I guess, what I was gonna say is that much of what is gonna come out of the, the plan is gonna be directed at the city and, and the, the departments are gonna need to be taking the action. Especially to go carbon, to, to reduce carbon footprint is gonna be department-based. And then we are expecting some resident, you know, participation in that. But, so I think without this committee, the climate action plan will go on and thrive and be a public document that's well transparent. Um, we've been bouncing it off the energy advisory committee because of the carbon element. Um, so I think, I just want to make sure that we're clear that the climate action plan doesn't need the committee to land, to land. But maybe over time, with some of the additional discussions, the committee could be there in the future to help implement like later steps. So, um, hopefully that was clear.
Okay, I agree with that, but the biodiversity, agricultural, that kind of stuff, I think is necess-- this, this committee can be dealing with separate from the climate action stuff. Is that, Owen, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead.
Yeah, so the other piece of the B, I mean, the bee city piece is more than just the resolution. It, it tasks the city with basically coming up with certain things. Um, developing a native plant policy, a pesticide, uh, integrated pesticide management plan, um, developing, um, community education. Um, and, and also, you know, basically figuring out, uh, gen- more generalized policy for use of municipal spaces for things like, you know, ecologically sustainable practices, mostly, you know, pollinator corridors. And, um, and, and again, native plant, responsible or sustainable native plantings in municipal spaces. So that's why additionally, there was an ad hoc committee was proposed because you could, you could theoretically just do that, develop those recommendations, give them to the city council and then dissolve. Although in conversations with some of the other stakeholders, you know, both on the resident side within the city, it sounded like there might be a longer term need based on things like the climate action plan, ongoing discussion about MVP, um, you know, ongoing development of our master plan as we look into, you know, further into the 21st century and other things. And so that's why I didn't disagree with potentially forming this committee because there are a lot of... it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing need. And so if we're, if if the council is interested in this B city proposal, we need some place for those discussions to happen. So whether it be some ad hoc committee that's formed or choosing to form this committee and tasking on it first with the Zerxie Society, um, um, tasks and then later on figuring out how to then take on other roles or simultaneously take on other roles. You kind of have to do that if we're going to, if we're going to adapt that plan. It's more than just a resolution.
I understand that.
I know.
But I still feel that a holistic approach that this this committee could be useful rather than just limited to the B city.
Oh, I don't disagree with you.
And 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 but I think i- i- even though there's a climate action plan coming and there's other issues that cross having this committee available to deal with subjects that aren't in that climate action plan. And then later on, bringing them in might be useful. But I have to be very honest. I could go either way with this. I don't know enough about it. I think a climate action committee, whatever we want to bees committee is useful to the city. If it doesn't happen, I'm not going to lose sleep over it. But I think it is very useful. So I'll vote in favor of it. I I think we need to change its membership and we need to change of, you know, no non-voting members and all that. But I think what you've got here is a purpose. And it sounds like the Energy Advisory Committee should stay as it is. And we should have that Energy Advisory member or designate on this committee so they can be back and forth. But I think this committee is useful. I I I don't think we should limit it to just the ad hoc committee and then be done with it.
I agree with you. I was just being clear of like all the options.
Right, right. I'm just saying that's where my head is right now. I don't know. Um, Jeff, go ahead.
Thank you again. Um, you know, I think being honest is good. Dan, you said that. I mean, I think what Owen just listed, you know, for actions, the, you know, integrated pest management plan and and a native planting policy and implementing that, those are not easy to do. They'll take time and effort. So it will take time to get there. The climate action plan, we expect to make recommendations and offer prioritization. So that'd be the one thing about forming this committee now is a lot of their work is going to wait until the climate action plan is done to help us prioritize. Because I think what what we all see is that if we have a prioritized list, we only have a limited number of staff people and people in general to actually implement things. So the committee will have to maybe get formed and just really be informed by the climate action plan as to how best to tackle priorities. So.
That sounds.
A little bit of chicken and egg right now because this is at the same time. But I just want to be clear. I think, you know, we could definitely um, have the climate action plan reported out to city council when it's done. We're talking about like nine months to a year of process to get that completed. Um, as soon as we start, which should be soon. So you know, to form a committee, to get memberships, to get people appointed, to get people oriented, to have several meetings, you know, we're talking like, you know, a year just to get a committee off the ground. So.
You mean this committee?
Yeah, I'd say any committee really. A new committee will take, it'll take some time to get oriented. Because they will need to understand the context in which they are going to be operating in. And then, you know, limited resources to get stuff done. The 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 why, the why I keep saying the prioritization list and things because that's what I really start, and the mayor's been in tune with this too. What we really see is this new administration is they they are going to carry more, they're going to carry forward the expectation that a municipality has a plan in a prioritized list, and then you go for funding for those items. So we just want to make sure we're staying on that course because that's that's how we'll get stuff moving, which is to have a plan which aligns how to get funding.
Well, since, let's just say this takes a while to get formed. At the same time, the climate action plan is being formed. Looks like they'll be up and running. This committee might be up and running when the climate action plan is out. So they'll, they'll be ready. That's just off the top of my head. I mean, I don't know. I really don't know. I I I I don't have a problem putting this forward with a couple of changes that we talked about. But I I don't know. I anybody else besides Owen? I'm going to talk to committee members. No? All right.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I I think uh, having the committee get started, get up and running might also take the aspect of, well, the first thing they dive into may be a specific topic or subject like the bees.
That's what I'm thinking.
And and then go on to a larger and with with the guidance of the climate action plan. So I think getting started is 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 a good thing.
I kind of feel that same way.
Owen? Yeah, that's how I feel too. I mean, let's, let's keep in mind everything that the planner just said, that just, just getting this up and running and established will take time. And then these, these first few policies we're talking about from the, from the Zerxie's initiative is going to, I mean, we're talking months to deliberate and debate and develop what that policy is going to look like and um, you know, it's, you know, there's, there's this Conway School project going on. I think there's a lot of attention now to ongoing projects like that, that looking at, um, uh, sustainable native planting and pollinator work within the city that, um, I think you know, this will be a nice extension of that when the students are done with their work in the few months of and then, and then it's just an advisory committee. So then all of that has to get handed over to ordinance and ordinance has to figure it out. So we're talking a while. And so the point is that I think that, I think there's a lot of work that can be done that doesn't that doesn't really step on toes, you know, or or duplicate work or, um, and that, you know, and if there's no work to be done, then they can, they can pause also. So that's my thought. Um, I think, I think there's a need for this. I do agree with the sentiment that it's better to do this in an ad hoc committee. Um, and I know there's enthusiasm about it. So
you think we wouldn't have trouble finding members?
You definitely would not have trouble finding members. That's good to hear. Mayor?
Semi concerned with the committee that another one would, it would model honestly all our other deliberative bodies for lack of diversity. I mean, there aren't a lot of BIPOC members on any of our committee and a connection to this is environmental justice, neighborhoods, and and we do have them. Um, so I would be very concerned if the report out was just to this committee or to this committee at, at all, quite honestly.
The report out?
Like for climate plan or or whatnot. I I just I really feel like people with the scope, do I feel like we have to put these, one? It's a wonderful way to get the public opinion. But I also feel like we will disappoint them. Because what is in this is a huge swift shift in municipal spending. But also what is most impactful for the environment in the city is not a lot of this. And and I do, I worry about that. I think they're great conversations to have. I've also gotten a lot of feedback and and the CRC is one of them that it's just conversation and what is the action and what is that? And, you know, I these are really important things. I I'm not saying it it's not. And I I can say that the folks in City Hall are are supportive of this. From the treasurer to to Cassie, and we're making movements, but one this, the people who are most affected by climate, will they true, I I can't say in honesty based on the other applicants we get, that they will, it will be a diverse committee.
I agree with that, but how do we solve that?
Well, I think we need to think about why they aren't. Not create another one. Very seriously.
Well, I also think this, I mean, I think because of the, um, citizen engagement with this committee as an opportunity to bring very simple climate solutions to our residents and kind of break through that diversity barrier.
I, I think that if this is a committee of action, similar to the rail trail on the pond, it's fantastic. But I would remind.
I hope so.
Well, I would remind that what they do, they self-fund.
I, that's interesting. I didn't see any funding necessary. This is advisory for this committee.
I'm, you know, like a recycle program. Or the bee, or I think this is really important and and I don't, I'm not undercutting it, but there can be no expectation staff is helping on a regular basis.
Well, we we already discussed, we did, I've decided that anyway. I mean, I don't think it should be.
And yeah, I mean, it it is not my choice. And and the other slide I thought is what about adding stakeholders, community stakeholders like Arcadia? Um, or, um, uh, oh gosh, the Land Trust or or whatnot. I mean, again, there aren't committees too, but maybe it's a round table getting ready. And and also the climate action plan includes public meetings. Like just, you know, kind of like what we're doing with Main Street, which again, Main Street, um, and considerations touches upon what this committee is being suggested to do, right? What kind of plantings, what design, you know.
What do you think, Main Street?
Main Street Transportation Improvement Project. Um, and we have our first.
But that's specific to Main Street, not the whole city.
It certainly is. It, it that, I mean, look at all the traffic and how inefficient that traffic is. The increase of speeding to reduce speeding through this process, you're reducing carbon, the native plantings and being insistent upon that. Um, talking about, you know, more direct routes to navigate that include, that make it, I mean, you're rolling the dice. You're all, you're writing right there.
Oh, I agree. I I just tried to understand how.
But this commit, I mean, so, so again, this is what I'm saying is that this committee like would really touch upon this. I mean, I, and I think that that's useful. I think it's very useful, but I do worry that there will be some frustration that the impact won't be smaller unless it is self-funded and they do it themselves.
I don't understand the funding aspect, but I do agree this has to be.
If you wanted to do an education program on recycling.
You'd have to fund it somehow.
Right.
Potentially, yeah, but there's also, I mean, potentially, I mean.
Well, they'd have to find grants. I mean, that's what disturbed me about other other things that are out there. Everybody's looking for the city's budget to give money when there's grants available for a lot of things. And it means someone's got to look for them. And that's the kind of thing that this committee would be tasked. If you want a recycling program, find the money. Don't come to the city. It's up to you, mayor, to fund it.
Or just education. I mean, I
Whatever.
I definitely sound like Debbie Downer here. But and and I think that this is truly, it's needed, it's the way we have to go. We are already starting to shift funding from other departments into public health and into planning and D W for these kind of initiatives. And I understand the, um, the interest in the public and and the public hearings are great ways to put it, put it in, just like the open space, um, plan. This is a very big committee that touches, I would say, every operation from the city. Um, and including some operations that other committees are doing work on, um. And then we get a climate action plan and it is different, like for the priorities.
Well.
I mean, the the number one priority right now for us in climate action is to to contract with somebody to do, um, fleet buying, one, it's cheaper for two, and switching it over over three or four years to all electric.
And so we're talking energy there. That's mostly an energy based priority to a certain extent. And and the roads and everything that.
I don't want to, like, we have to forget the word energy.
Okay.
It's no longer relevant. We have to think carbon. So bees and native plants, right? But also the biggest carbon footprint that a city has, cities in general, are are cars. And residential cars, like in some cities, seventy-five percent. I think we're closer to sixty-five percent here, but think about that. That's, and we need, you know, so so I just yeah. I it's your choice to do it, and I would even say I I'm forward for it. But I
Your president.
I I'm, I just think that with all the enthusiasm across um, the committees we have now, I I think there's something to look to to hone or add on the scope. I think about the aggregate. Um, the agricultural committee, the conservation committee, like what's in their purpose now that need to be shifted or they're willing to take on.
In other words, the agricultural committee, can they take on the bee stuff?
I don't know.
I don't know if that's worked. I don't.
I would say.
I don't know. I'm just, is that what you're saying?
I, yeah, sorry.
Yeah, no, I I I don't, I I don't know. I mean, I get, the the bottom line for me is this is all encompassing. I think it's wonderful. And then we're coming out with a climate action plan that really by experts that could say, look, you really need a publicly informed body that is like doing X, Y, and Z. Like, the Board of Public Works is the one that keeps all of us in City Hall focused on the priorities in the storm water management plan. You know, I mean, there are a lot and we're like, and they'll say, is that on the plan? Like this is, you know, give us an update and just did the rate thing. Um, and I think a committee like this would once the goals are set, we're, this is what we need. Because it does touch upon everything a city does.
Yeah, and I think that just because it's the scope is as it is, it doesn't mean that they necessarily will be doing some of these things. It means they can. But it doesn't mean they will. And I think that that's all part of collaboration, having conversations so that they're not, for instance, you know, tasking themselves with I mean, I think a lot of the agenda of this committee would be fed by information from the mayor's office and planning and say, hey, we we need to, this is something that we need to do. Is this something you would take on? Or if it's already informed by like Conservation or Ag, but my my understanding from the talk to you, like Agricultural Commission, Conservation Commission is that they're, they're, what they're specifically tasked to do doesn't doesn't fill some of these gaps. So.
Um, again, I feel like this committee is worth trying. I really do. Um, because it does fill some of those gaps. And I I I I don't see a tremendous downside. I see some redundancy. But I don't see a tremendous downside to this. I see a plus side. Especially when it comes to the biodiversity issues and things like that. So I'm I'm ready to say, let's try it, but I'm one person, so. Anybody else? I want to move, what I want to do as a chair is absorb all this and come to a conclusion at the next meeting.
Um, I I do, I made a little note here. Um, JP brought it up around the committee being focused on certain things, like our new city and whatnot. And if there's a pilot or creation, you know, uh, JP's suggestion around like focus on the new city, which has a lot to do with the environment and erosion and quality of water.
Think that kind of thing should be in the ordinance?
Well, I I don't think it should be in the ordinance. I'm just wondering if that's something this committee, you know, so yes, we've had public like walkabouts or whatnot for the committee to hold that and have a focus on a project.
Well, that's.
I don't know. I mean, I don't know how to write that into an ordinance or it's a request. And I'm not sure. Certainly, the Energy Advisory Committee has had some frustration with me about what my priorities are and what they're thinking about. Um, but I don't know. I think JP brings up a very interesting point. Of we have some focused projects that have been in work for years and now they're coming to fruition to kind of like land the plan. Land the plan. And we have a group of folks who are extremely interested in doing this work. You know, I'm still worried about diversity and stuff like that, but the timing, I, you know, I don't know, I know you don't want to keep talking about, I, you know, would defer also to Jeff. Um, because a lot of times we worry about public input to some of these plans. And I still want to do the outreach, of course, but this is a way, this is another public opportunity, like when you guys um, reviewed the mayor's pledge and you went one by one with that public hearing, something similar to that. I I don't know. I I mean, but and maybe JP has more, I'm just, I think JP, I think you said two sentences and I'm kind of jumping all over it, but but it kind of, it resonated with me.
Well, I I think I was saying that there could be specificity at the beginning on individual projects. Uh, and then go on to the broader perspective. That was the general concept. And I I think we can move forward with that.
And I think if we have those projects, the new city, the bee, the the Zerxie's bees, uh, if I'm pronouncing that right, um, they could be tasks that we give to this committee. I don't think they need to be the ordinance, but somehow we give them those tasks. And that's, that's a matter of, you know. And that's, that's a matter of, you know. If this is created as a city committee, the president of council, the mayor sit down with them, we'd like you to test this. Right now, this is your priority. Let's do new city, let's do the bees thing now. We've got a climate action plan, let's put aside all that other stuff until that comes out. But that's a way in which they're tasked when they finally get solved. Just thought, just a thought, because that's happened before, where we have a committee and then they're they're asked to do things.
Just a quick question.
Yes.
So I'm just interested in um. Being efficient and I feel like one of the things the mayor said was. We have committees that. Do things that they didn't used to do before and that's not written down anymore. And you mentioned there's redundancy. And whose responsibility is it for to review committees and find out who's doing what? And do we need to be thinking about those things?
Well, unfortunately, most of the committees are under the mayor. But I think if the mayor said, and I'm not putting this, you have enough on your plate. But said, you guys have to look at your purpose for existing and give me that again. Because remember when we did the subcommittees and we decided as a council, we needed to be more specific what those subcommittees did. It may be just a a letter from the mayor, I want you to review your purpose for existing. Or what your goals are, what's your mission? Because has it changed? I don't know. All I'm saying is that that would answer your question, because most of the committees in town are appointed by the mayor.
Right.
This, the purpose of this ordinance is direct directing who's on it. And gives the city council some input onto who's appointed besides just the mayor. Administrative code. We could do that, but most of the time that's the mayor's uh prerogative to establish a committee and to appoint membership. So. I'm ready to take all this in. I think you've heard all this, eliminate the language on that I've got highlighted here. And maybe make a couple of other changes and let's come back to the committee and have a vote at the next meeting. Because I'm ready to say yes to it unless I hear negative from anybody. What do you think, JP? Next meeting, wait.
I'm with you, I'm I'm with you on that.
Okay. Um. All right, I don't know when the next.
Me too. I'm also interested in that.
Okay, well, I thought you would say something. I asked him because he's a mile away or twenty miles away. Are you in America? We don't even know where you are. Anyway. Uh, okay, so that subject is done for now. And I will try to find a new meeting time. Unfortunately, Mayor, you should know this, we're going to move the finance meeting to February ninth. Because Connie's unavailable on the eighth, but I'm going to run that by your team to see if that's going to be okay. But I don't know when the rules committee meeting will be, so. The finance meeting is going to be the ninth, which is a Thursday. Because Connie's out of town for a week.
Sorry.
That's fine, you're allowed, but I, you know, the fact that we've always had them on Wednesdays gives people a thought that it's always there.
Sure, sure.
That is a mean it has to be. Thank you, Jeff, unless you want to stay for charter stuff. Now, huh? Let's start with two ten committee. This is relatively easy for me.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's a great, that's familiar.
Oh, yeah.
Chair.
Yes, Ben.
On the ninth, uh, and I would like to attend finance committee. Uh, I won't speak for Councilor Garrett, but I will be uh singing karaoke. Um, to benefit Big Brothers, um, Big Sisters. At. The Boyle Stil rooms and I. We got the six to nine.
You know, having a committee, a a a meeting these days.
I wouldn't do that as well.
And I want to say, just on the record, the weather people don't know what the hell they're doing.
I.
I'm not on the finance committee and while I would potentially attend, I will also be at the super day.
Well, and everybody in the planet's going to want to get the mayor's things.
I just take a uh quick look about the committees. And it looked like most of the committee are being created by ordinance. So they're being created by ordinance because if you go to all the ordinance that we have in town.
What are we talking about?
The committees. She was asking about. How we can review the committees, I think. Because you've been created by ordinance.
Right, regardless, even if like with the C R C, I see. Yeah, right.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that. It's our administrative code. I I know we have a lot of administrative code change.
So you're recommending an ordinance committee review committee?
Well, we could, we could ask them to do it then. I just know that the mayor appoints most of those memberships, so I assume they were created by code. But again, assuming is a. So the ninth might not be. Do you want to be at the meeting?
I I don't want, I just mentioned, I don't want people, I don't want anybody here assume that I'll be here because I have a prior commitment. And it would be up to this. Committee to schedule the meetings.
So let's talk about it at Tuesday's meeting. We have a Tuesday thirty-first meeting. Let's look at the calendar and dive deep into it.
So I'm just going to say this right now, like, could we potentially start the meeting at like four thirty? Would that give you enough time to like prepare yourself or?
Yeah, I, yeah, I I mean, even private lot, right? I mean.
I have to check with Tom, but let's let's talk Tuesday.
I know, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, I want.
Because the. I do five because I like the fact that our staff is still here instead of having them come back for six thirty meeting. All right, we're on to the charter. This is two ten. I have it up on the screen. I'm gonna make it bigger. Connie showed me how to do that. I have no problem with these changes. I want to give you guys some history. This used to be thirty days. Okay, am I? Okay. Appointments review used to be thirty days. I thought in two thousand and ten, Charter Review Committee. I actually was the one who said, we got to make it forty-five days because of the summer. But we need to remember this is a mayor-centric form of government, therefore. One of the things that I think the founders of this charter thought was, if you make it too long. Committees are stuck in the council. And we need to remember that this forty-five days or sixty days is to affirm a member. Or to deny, mostly to deny a membership. Okay, because. We don't have to affirm it at all. If they become members, if we don't talk about it for sixty, sixty days. But if we want to deny a membership, we've got right now forty-five days to do that. I have no problem making this because what I've seen. I saw it with Peggy Coniff, I saw it with Lindsay, and I'm seeing it with Brad, is they take their job seriously with regard to appointments. And I like that. I don't think it should be a rubber stamp. So I have no problem with the sixty days, uh, having done a lot of charter reviews. So I'm open to discussion, Connie, JP.
I have a. Couple of thoughts. To me, based on what I read in Brad's letter. That the process, there is a problem with the process. And it seems to me. That the vetting process is not the problem. Seems to me that the problem lies in the application process, where we don't communicate expectations. We don't communicate um process. We have no idea or understanding people's needs. Uh, we have no idea or understanding of people's preferred mode of form of communication. Uh, we have not outlined to them expectations in terms of we will be communicating with you, we will be contacting you. So there's no understanding of that. Um, so to me, it seems like our purpose is to. Both remove barriers to get people. Participating in government as well as giving chairs. People who can be on their committees, provide forum, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And this just feels like it. Slows down that process and given what happened. At the last meeting where two people abstained because, I'll speak for myself, I abstained because I didn't feel like I had enough information. And if I had, if Brad had fifteen more days, I don't think the outcome of that would have been any different. Because he had already contacted that person. Three times. And the person didn't respond, according to my understanding of Brad's description of what happened, and so. Fifteen more days wouldn't have made that person say, oh, I have now more time to not communicate. And so to me, that just feels like it slows down the process. And so if this process is. Flawed, as Brad said, that it's not the vetting process that's flawed. It's the application process. And so I think we need to look at the application to decide whether or not we can improve that. In order to be able to do more effectively and efficiently. A vet them, but to me, this just slows down governance.
You mean adding more time?
Yeah, adding more time slows down the process, and I think that's what we want to eliminate, and I think the the problem rests in the application process.
But we can't put that in the charter, do that with rules, but we've had this discussion with PEG's committee, we had this discussion with Lindsay's. There's been a lot of discussion on how the process of reappointing and appointing new members.
Sure.
Um, I don't have a solution to that, but giving more time. I mean, we're only talking fifteen days. I don't think it slows the process down more. But I also know that. They've been working very hard, those three chairs that I've mentioned, to try and get answers to the council. If they need a little more time, okay, so I'm I'm okay with it. JP, your thoughts on this one?
I think the application pro, uh, Connie's councillor Denham is actually right on with regard to the application process. The expectations that we need to define our needs, uh, have better communicate. And have a process for contacting people and having them get back to us. That can be done outside of a change in the charter, I believe. I don't think it's necessarily appropriate to address this in the charter. I think it's an important issue that we should be talking about. Uh, so. That's my 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 sense on on that. In terms of the sixty days, I'm good with this, with with moving to sixty days. We can do it faster if it is something that can be accomplished. The question is. Uh, do we, might we need sixty days, especially if there might might be discussion of of a rejection? Uh, of of of.
And you hit the thing on the nose, because we've approved most, most appointments have been approved in one meeting. Yes. Because no question, I want to stay on the committee reappointment. Um, it's. An appointment of somebody really important like uh. Chief of Police or something or or the city attorney we just did, or the city clerk. We don't spend a lot of time on those reappointments. But if there is a controversial member and that's found out by the chair of the committee, he needs the time to investigate them. And I think adding more time is important. Because then he's going to say, Mayor, did you, maybe he goes to the mayor and says, Mayor, your appointment uh is creating some controversy here. And there's a back and forth, so more time, and we're not talking months here, we're talking fifteen days. And the point of this charter section is rejection of an appointment, remember that. Giving more time for the council to investigate a rejection isn't a bad idea. It's happened once. I know the name of the person. Um, and uh, it happened once in my tenure where we rejected an appointment because we got a lot of citizen complaints. And uh.
Most do, because we reject one too.
What was that? Uh, I remember now, okay, twice, but twice, it's twenty-six years. But it doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. I think we should do it. We should give you.
I I mean, I had one other comment, if I may.
Uh, sure.
Reading uh. The sections two nine and two ten very carefully. I did come up with some other issues that I'd like to discuss regarding those, since we're talking about a charter change. Uh, I think there can be some things that we do to make it clearer for the for 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 the public. And for ourselves, so I I'd like to bring those up after we discuss the specifics of sixty days, if I may.
Um. I think you need to come up with that as a special request for an agenda item. If we're going to talk about two nine, because this is two ten. Um, JP, we lost you. Are you muted?
Yeah, it's muted.
Are you muted there?
Yeah, I was sorry, sorry.
Oh, there you go. You're back, you're back.
I I think the the items aren't really necessarily different. They el- elicit what we're talking about and. So.
Yeah, T nine is mentioned, what do you?
I I think, I think they're related.
Well, all right, uh. I gotta, I I have the charter, I can go with a two nine if I have to, but Owen wanted to say something first.
Oh, well, so first of all, I I completely agree with councillor Denham that there's that there's always fine tuning that can happen upfront. I think sometimes it is unclear exactly to people, and I'm not sure if that's. I think there's good information, there can always be more information. I think that one of the reasons I I, the president and I had spoken about this is, I mean, we have not been to council as long as you, Mr. Chairman. But I've run into a bunch of situations where where, for instance, the committee just couldn't meet. And even though the council technically could have a conversation about the appointee. You know, would put us in a really bad spot, especially again with the way our sessions work sometimes, specifically in the summer. Um, it just, it seemed that in my very brief time, in five years that I've been here. Having run into those situations, it felt like a reasonable extension. The other, the original, one of the original conversations was, we allow. From the council to vote for an extension of forty-five days, it made sense just to make the time longer. And I agree with the previous comments that that doesn't mean that every process will be sixty days, just means it gives you that much time. Um, so that that was the only thought behind it. Um, and having seen enough examples where this had happened, where if we had a little bit more time, I think we could have given. A little bit more justice to that conversation. So.
I'm opening two nine, but go ahead, continue. I can go back to two ten.
Going to say like. It it. Um, I don't, I don't necessarily care, right? But in the twenty-six years. That that Chair Wrist has been on, this has only happened twice uh. Doing this.
Rejections.
Rejections happening. Uh, and I don't want this to turn into an opportunity where we go searching for reason not to appoint people. That's, I I think that that's.
I don't think that was the intent.
It may not be the intent, what I'm saying is, is I don't want that to become the intent. And people can take sixty days and use that however they want, and so. I'm just saying, I think we need to be mindful that we're not going to be on this council forever. And people use such opportunities, and when we're talking about access. When we're talking about BIPOC residents, when we're talking about various underrepresented populations. We need to be mindful of what access looks like to participating in this. And people wield power in a variety of different ways, and so in my opinion, it just seems like it doesn't happen. A great deal to have to warrant that, and I still think that the problem. Isn't in the vetting process, the problem is in the application process.
Omar. I thank you, Consular Denham, but I think that can happen the other way too.
Sure.
I I think it can happen that the mayor can uh submit an appointment. The day before we have a city council meeting in the summer. And then if something happened and they will do it in purpose and something happened, the next month. And we have to move that meeting for the next month, it's going to be forty-five days and that person is going to be appointed automatically. Because it's those forty-five days start when the mayors.
For the city clerk receives it and it's.
Yes.
And to be honest with you, that's how my daughter got appointed to the board of health.
I remember that conversation.
Because Lindsay could get ahold of her or there was a problem.
That may you can do that to the other side too, appoint girls. Um, no people of color, and I guess it's gonna, no gonna be people of color, it's gonna be only white people.
Do you want me to put that in a minute?
That can happen.
Protest.
Absolutely, and so.
And that's why I think the sixty days will cover a little bit of that, like if the mayor of of.
Using the example of my daughter, sixty days would. Using the example of my daughter, sixty days would have got a little more time for them to say, and she's being appointed to the Board of Health. We ought to make sure of that, that appointment.
And that is going to.
So are you saying she shouldn't have been appointed to the Board of Health?
You're trying to get me in trouble.
No, but it was, it was, it was an uncomfortable conversation because she obviously deserved to be appointed.
Sure.
But we didn't get to have the right conversation.
Well, we, a, a, and it was all a matter of vacations or somebody couldn't talk to somebody. So having a little more time might have resolved that. But just having the resume in front of us as a council, we didn't worry about it. And then I pointed out, well, she's already appointed, everybody.
And, and, and to me, the logic of six days is basically that, like, is when the mayor sent the appointment to the city clerk in this step. And that can happen. We have the meeting Wednesday. If the city council didn't amend that, the mayor cannot point that the Monday before that Wednesday. And start counting that Monday for forty-five days.
And the summer is the time.
You're saying it's the mayor's fault. I just want to make.
I didn't say that. Don't put that in there.
There's a big bus and you're being. Mayor has her hand up.
There's a long line of buses. Don't worry about it. Um, uh, so one, I will just say about forty-five and sixty. Um, and like summer, I mean, I, I miss you in the summer and I love to see two meetings every summer month. Um, especially with hybrid. So I'll, I'll just go on the record because I have an opportunity to do that. Um, a, and it's not just because it came up in the conversation. Um, the, um, the application process and, and all of that. Um, I'm happy through administrative code and working with, um, councils that want to, uh, uh, first of all, codify the application process because the uh, application that we use now was just a, um, a helping form that a past mayor created. And it's not anywhere. And I, I think that came up the last time we talked about it. Happy to, and me, um, Lindsay on my team as well as myself, and we, we have kind of a running eye out for what other, other communities do and how they've codified it. So, um, my office could do that via administrative code. And we could take that on. I don't think it's going to be an elongated process. We, we have the goals, you know, uh, identified. I'm happy to.
That's good to hear.
Yeah, that's what I get for coming to a meeting in person. Yep, we'll do it. Hope Lindsay's watching.
Charter change, charter change. Mayor must attend all subcommittee meetings.
We're just, we're just for the minutes. Um, Counselor Zerrit, uh, when the mayor said she would like to see us twice a month in the summertime, you laughed. Would you like?
You could absolutely put that in. You could please.
You can put that. I'm okay with that.
It was, uh, I'm.
It was more a laugh.
Don't care.
Loss of sanity.
I'm taking the whole summer off.
Yeah.
Um.
I didn't know how to write.
So I'm going to be, we have fifteen more minutes before the chair is going to conclude this meeting because an hour and a half is enough for me. Um, I want to go back to JP because you mentioned two nine. And at the bottom of the page, the question of rejection of any appointment made by the mayor shall not be subject to the procedure of charter objection provided in two nine, which refers to a counselor saying, I object to this appointment and they're seconded at the time of the appointment, then that has to be jumped to a new meeting. That's what two nine B does. They are, are, a counselor originally. This was interesting. A counselor originally could object without a second. I put the second in. And that meant that if, that you're having a vote on a very important topic. And you want to conclude it that night. I object, charter two nine B says I can object. Goes to the next meeting. You have to stop the vote. Now it has to have a second to do that. So I assume that's what you're referring to when you say you want to talk about two nine as it relates to two ten. I mean, JP, where will you go with that?
Uh, maybe.
I do, after reviewing the letter that we sent, uh, Counselor Lozara and I, we sent, we specifically, I'm talking about section two ten, and I know it's related to appointments too. But, um, always thinking about the public, the public didn't have the opportunity to see that we're going to talk about two nine. And I think we shouldn't. Yes, and I, and I agree now. Um, so. I'm sorry that I.
I, I think we're only talking about two nine as it relates to two ten. And I think if we, if we, if we're going to make a change in, uh, the, I'm looking at the last line here and it says, the question on rejection of any appointment. Are we really having, is it really a question on rejection or is it a vote to object?
Well, let me tell you why that's there. We're voting to reject an appointment.
No.
Okay?
Well, no, you're, you're voting to reject or you're voting to appoint?
It says here, it's a question of rejection.
All right, but are you voting, is the motion to, to reject or to appoint?
No, there's a motion to. The motion to reject an appointment is on the floor at the council. A member says, I object to this. Goes two weeks more. They're appointed by virtue of the fact that it's sixty days or forty-five days. So one member can overrule the will of the council, which the will of the council was to, to reject the appointment. But one member wants the person to be appointed. Now it takes two because I changed that to a second. I don't want to change that, but the reason that's there is because we don't want two members of the council rejecting or overruling seven members of the council who might want to reject an appointment. Does everybody understand that? That's, that's the, how the charter was written. It was because it didn't want to give power to one or two members to overrule the rest of the council. It's, it's on here. It has to, it's okay because this is two nine with relate, and we're talking about this last two sentences. So I'm okay with it.
I, I, I was looking at.
When I'm talking about changing two nine, we're talking about why it's there. Okay. Why is that language in this section?
So.
And I'm telling you why.
Right.
Does that make sense, JP?
Yes, could, could I, uh, actually, I was wondering if it makes more sense to say, rather than the question on rejection of any appointment to a vote on any appointment made by the mayor shall not be subject to.
I don't agree with that. Sorry, he's yelling at me. Say it again, what, what you said?
All right. Currently, the language is the question on rejection of any appointment. I think it would be clearer if it read, a vote on any appointment made by the mayor shall not be subject, whether it be. It, that two nine does not apply.
I want to understand his.
If you say a vote, it means a vote to affirm or object or reject. If you say, he says he wants to change the word rejection to a vote. I disagree because rejection is the reason this exists. If you say vote, it's a vote for affirmation or rejection, correct?
Right.
Um, so it could be worked both ways, but the reason this exists because of the time is rejection. So I don't think I want to, I, I don't, I don't agree with changing that. And anyway, President Gomez, it is a line in two ten, so we can talk about it.
I see it.
Um, that's my position on it, JP. If you want to put that in as a. Well, we could talk about it now. I don't want to change the word rejection to a vote. I want to keep it that way because I think the purpose of the entire section is rejection of an appointment. Because affirmation doesn't have to happen. If it doesn't happen, they're appointed, right?
Correct.
And going back to why that's there. This happened at the end of our, my fourth term, when a counselor was resigning, was leaving because they didn't get reelected and objected to something we were doing. And we had to move it to the new meeting, the new council in January. So the president and I told the president, as rules chairman, I said, all you have to do is call a special meeting and then we vote on it because it only allowed you to object for one meeting. So we had to come back three days before Christmas and vote on something.
How did you feel about that?
Not very happy, but that guy was gone. He didn't come to the meeting. He was gone. But anyway, I don't want to talk about who that was. But that's why I changed the objection to two people. So a person could object. I, I don't like this vote, but somebody else has to agree to that. Okay. But I, I don't agree that that should be changed because this is the power of, because that would allow also someone to object to appointing somebody. When all the council says, yes, let's appoint them. This is specific to rejection. Now they could still do that. Because right now they could still do that. Two members could object to, this language is only dealing with objection. So two members wanted to object to an actual appointment. They could do it now. But what good is that? Because they're still appointed if the timeline's out.
True.
So this is specific to, to rejection because the timing, if you don't reject, in this case, sixty days, if you don't reject an appointment within sixty days, they're appointed.
So because at the end of the day, it's mayor's appointment, appointed.
And it says mayor's appointment.
And the mayor's appointing someone is because the mayor wanted that person.
So when we appoint the city clerk, which is a city council, two people could object.
Yeah.
But that's not subject to sixty days. Remember, this is the mayor's.
Mayor's appointments.
This is all about the mayor's appointments. It's not about city council appointments.
Mm-hmm.
It's about the mayor's appointment because we have, we have the auditor, the principal assessor, we have three plus the city clerk. Four.
Four.
Well, she's part of the three, right? I'm sorry.
Well, but she's the same person. That's why I was saying.
But there's two of her.
So I'm okay with moving this. Uh, by the way, just so everybody remembers, this, these charter changes, all of, all four of them, two ten and, and, and the others have to go before the legislature to be approved. They're not a vote. And in order to do that, we must have concurrent approval of the mayor. Since you're here. Two ten. If you disagree, it doesn't go anywhere. In other words, you want to think about it, but we would, we would vote, I'm not going to vote on this tonight, but we would vote to send this to you and then you decide.
Um, I, you know, this has been a long and hard deliberation. I know. You know, it's come up the, before. I mean, I wouldn't block the councils with.
Okay. Let me go to, it's good to know, but we're not voting on it tonight. Uh, I didn't want to do that. I want to go to the other one. What time is it? Well, just, just to look at it real quick because I'd like to try and get something done, uh, tonight. Let me find it in my drive.
Dan, I, I just wanted everybody to know I have a meeting to attend at seven.
We're, we're, we're concluding in five minutes.
Right.
This is the, this is, remember when we staggered the amount of money we give the mayor on salary? And I think it was you, JP, and others that said we'd ought to put it, codify it in the charter because even though the city attorney said it was okay to do, this codifies it when we adopt, I don't, you weren't on the council when we did it. Last time when we did the mayor's salary, we did it for a year. So it wouldn't hit the budget so hard. We did it in four different. So this just says, puts it in writing that we could do it. I don't think it's controversial. Anybody?
Uh, I, I was thinking.
You don't have to do it. You could do it in one ordinance, but this allows us to stagger it, remember?
I, I don't, I don't think we need further definition. I think the, the simpler we are with the language, the better we will be. And.
Is this too complicated?
Yeah, that, that the council essentially, we need to say council sets the salary of the mayor or sets the annual salary of the mayor. And then that leaves anything, that really leaves anything open.
Well, that's what the city attorney said, but we talked about making it more codified that you can do it over four years. And the reason is because we have four years now. When this was written, we didn't have four years. We had two years. So the point being, if you're going to raise the salary for the mayor, you can't raise the salary for the mayor while she's still, she's still in office. So you have to wait four years before you can do it.
Yeah.
So you're going to make a large increase because you're feeling like we did. If you make a large increase, you're going to say, all right, we don't want to hit the budget that hard one year. We're going to stagger it. That's the reason this language is here is so that it's codified that we can do it. I agree with you because the city attorney said we don't have to, but sometime in the future council, they may say, well, we have to dig up all those opinions and make sure we could do it because we want to do it. Why not put it in the charter? And I thought it was you, JP, that said we should do it.
I, I, I was the one who suggested that we do this specific type of salary arrangement. But to put it in the charter, I, I'm not sure I, I went that far. I don't think we needed it.
Why not? I mean, well, I do. I, I feel like we should do it. The charter is written for the future. To future mayor, future. What do you think? I want you raising your hand.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that it just, it's clarifying language. I don't think it, it makes it, if anything, it, it's just clarified language. It doesn't, so. I don't think that that's bad. It's not like it's really, it's not changing what we can already do or just making it more clear what we can do. And so also if we're, if we're considering any charter changes right now, to do them together is the best thing. I mean, I, I mean, just for the sake of transparency, when I was having this conversation with the president about section two ten, I spoke with Rep. Carey and I said, well, what's, what's your timeline? And so since you are already considering other things, like the more things that we can.
Oh, it's going to take a year for this to get through.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have an issue with this. I mean, it's not.
This has to go to.
This isn't, this isn't, it's not loosening or regulating anything more. It's just making more clear what we can do.
And the other thing that I put in here, acting mayor sworn in under three nine B, which is what we're going to talk about, the vacancy of the mayor and having an acting mayor. There's nothing anywhere that talks about how that acting mayor should be compensated. So that's why that's in there. Because this is the compensation thing. Um, I, I feel like this is simpleful, simple enough that it can go forward. So it's, uh, four minutes, seven. What, JP?
I was just going to say, I, I think, I just wonder if it makes it by, by defining what we could do, may do, are we in some way, if somebody comes up with another idea that's different, but it's not thi, it's not this, uh, will they be allowed to do the new idea?
May.
Or, or because we now use the language may, are we limiting him saying, well, you said you might, you may be able to do this, but you didn't say you may be able to do that.
Well, the word may gives you flexibility. If I said the salary. Shall be spread out, then you have to do it. If you put shall in there, it has to happen. Okay, so anyway, we talked about this. Next meeting, I would like to firm up the next ordinance and also deal with charter vacancies. So please study that. I don't know when the next meeting will be. I will be in touch. Um, I have to be in touch with both of you guys. Uh, I'll probably just call you because I don't know. Okay. Owen, I don't know when the next meeting is going to be.
Yeah, just something though.
So I, I need a motion to, um, uh, we have a motion on the floor to adjourn. Counselor Kuzinski.
Second. Oh.
Well.
On the floor. Good eye.
Say that Kuzinski, uh, seconded it, the motion. And Counselor Connor? I say I.
Oh, my God.
No, no coercion here.
All right, all right. Well, you know, I honored you with that, so.
Thank you all.
All right. Thank you all. We'll see. I'm stopping the recording.